To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We thank you all for taking the time to come and visit our meeting this evening. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaugh.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes of the meeting that was held on March 18th, 2019, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none is there, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondents this evening?
Yes. I have two fiscal officer certificates from the Finance Director, Brian Bouchon, and one is for, in connection with the proposed issue of not to exceed $1,010,000 of notes to be issued anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new city park building. And also in connection with a proposed issue of not to exceed $890,000 of notes for the purpose of paying costs of acquiring real estate for city purposes. And then I also distributed to you prior to this meeting a listing of budget transfers to be made for the month of April, and those transfers require your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, do we have any special recognitions this evening? Good, thank you. We'll move on to lobby visitation. Kay, has anyone registered to address City Council?
Yes, we have one person, Nathan Eberly.
Council members, Nathan Eberly, 907 Sandridge Road, Bowling Green. Thank you for allowing me to step up. I come to lobby visitation today out of slight concern, just not understanding the full details of the proposed ordinance or proposed transaction that's put forward of the purchase of 130 South Main Street, what that total cost would be to city taxpayers in the end, what does that mean for the city for additional maintenance expense, anything like that with additional parking lots that might be associated. And the concern comes from the last two years that we've had really heated discussions with the budget issues of our general fund. And then this past year, we had the long discussions of parking fees and what that may mean for the city and taxpayers and visitors of downtown. And now we get word that there is now a large purchase that's being floated out there. And I understand that there's, the city plans to ultimately sell the building from what I read. But understanding real estate, understanding that we're kind of at a height of a market, not really kind of on a zooming off market for commercial, what risk is the city taking on that might be an undue burden in the short term or even long term? So I'm just coming forward to express those concerns and hope that City Council can address that. As I saw that it also mentioned in the agenda that this would also be voted in with an emergency clause, which again just gives further pause for me as a citizen and as taxpayer, again, after hearing for two years that we've had issue financially, to see this now as a major purchase. Not to discount that, I think it could be a good project, but that how it's explained to the city taxpayers and residences, I think is very important.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. I'm not prepared to answer in detail at this point in time, but we will be addressing the legislation as it passes across our legislative agenda for certain.
Okay, thank you. And again, that's, the main concern is the emergency clause that's being put out there for it. As I, the newspaper article was put out just recently, and just before this meeting in the Community Action Committee, it was spoken about public input. And I think if we throw this out there and that if it's something that's rushed, have we given enough community or provided enough community input for something that's so large that again, that maybe some people may not understand and could be a detriment. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Apparently, there's no emergency clause on it.
No, no, there is no, yeah, there is no emergency clause on it, no.
That's all we have.
Very good. Thank you. Let's proceed to the introduction of new legislation, please.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019. An ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2019 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President? Oh, are you still going?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
An ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,010,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new city park community building and including landscaping, paving, an entry drive and parking lot, and constructing a patio, together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by Revised Code Section 133.15 to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 890,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of acquiring real estate for city purposes and declaring an emergency. Just for clarification, Kay, is that the ordinance that we're maybe not declaring an emergency on? I'm a little mixed up on that.
The next one that you're going to read is for the actual purchase of the property, and it does not have an emergency clause.
Thank you. Ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate and authorizing the mayor and municipal administrator to complete the purchase of said properties in substantial accordance with the contract exhibits attached and authorizing the municipal administrator to request proposals for the sale of certain of said property not necessary for municipal purposes, and authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to complete said acquisitions and sale by the mayor and/or the municipal administrator.
Thank you, Bruce. Mr. President.
Hollenbaugh.
I have a, I have a resolution to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program. Thank you, Mark. And I have two ordinances from the Public Utilities Committee, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into an agreement with Manchester Group LLC for a utility service line protection program, and an ordinance accepting a utility easement from the Village of Haskins. Official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. I do have several items that I would like to discuss with you this evening. The first item is something we do every year, and it's, it's just terribly important. And I will be presenting this proclamation to the members of the city's Human Relations Commission this Friday at 8:00 in the morning. And I'm not going to read all of this because it has to do with Fair Housing Act of 1968. As again, as I said, we do it every year. It is something that's terribly important. And just as a reminder, that the, one of the key provisions in the whereas is that Dr. Harold doesn't like too many whereas is, he had some clever thing to say about whereas is in there, but this is a whereas in the proclamation. The city of Bowling Green supports fair housing efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing by providing education to seekers of housing, rental property owners, managers, and others regarding state and federal fair housing laws, monitors local advertising for potential fair housing violations, and reports violations of fair housing acts to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. Those are the, one of the key of several key provisions in this proclamation. And what I am doing this evening, and then I will be, I've said, sharing with the members of the Human Relations Commission on Friday, is declaring the month of April 2019 in Bowling Green, Ohio as Fair Housing Month. So I will be presenting this to the commission on Friday morning at 8:00 right here. Needless to say, the break, the natural gas line break really caused us all a great deal of stress this last week. Back to back with one thing that was probably the fault of the city and the water line thing. That was an engineering error there that everyone owned up to. But the following day, then, they have the, that natural gas leak and with the incident with the backhoe and so forth. And the only thing I want to say is that I was really impressed with the way everyone responded to that ugly incident. And our police and fire really went that right away. Our Public Utilities, Public Works, and most of, especially of course, our city administration, all hands were on deck to trying to deal with that situation. I'm particularly grateful to Assistant Municipal Administrator Joe Fawcett. He's provided you with an incident report, and I thought gave him high marks for that. I, no one had to ask him for it. He did it. And I found it to be very, very helpful in addressing the situation. Now, we will have an after-action review that will be coming up very soon, and you will be notified when that will take place. But all principles will come back together to make sure that everything was done according to all the protocols that we have in place, and if we have to make any changes, that will be done as well. Interestingly, on the heels of this now, in fact, four visitors arrived in our community today. They're part of the fire division's reaccreditation review. Now, they're a team. These are key people in the world of firefighting from around the country. We have one from, each from Georgia, Illinois, Pennsylvania, and Texas, four individuals that will be looking at the Bowling Green Fire Division for, as part of the in-depth reaccreditation process. And Chief Mormon was not able to be here tonight. I know he was hoping to be here, but he is meeting with the group right now. They will be with us all this week and with this reaccreditation review process. And so it will be, it's something that we do every four or five years, Joe, is it? Yeah. And so it's a healthy process. I think we all should take, feel good about it. This time well spent. The, the state budget issues are in the front of our thinking right now, and perhaps you've had a chance to review the Ohio Municipal League, their report that just came today, where it really actually came in on Friday and that. Last, late last week, Governor Dewine released his proposed state operating budget for FY '20 and '21, and the legislation is now being introduced. I won't go through those details there, but from our perspective, I'm particularly grateful that the governor has proposed the budget includes a 9.1% increase to the local government fund for FY fiscal year '20 and a 1.8% increase for fiscal year '21. That's something that has caused us a great deal of concern over the last eight years. I'll stop there. But it's, this is encouraging and I, because they also are looking at providing some additional provisions related to TIFs, tax incremental financing, and several other factors that will be of support to local government, including they're proposing an allocation of $10 million each fiscal year for local government audit support on Bouchon. So maybe that will help us out too, because these take a lot of time and effort and costs are certainly related to that. And just a reminder that about the Interfaith Breakfast in the morning, starting at 7:15, when breakfast will be provided by our friends at South Side Six, at So and Amal Shaheen, and their family, and they're always on hand there. It's always a special treat. This is the fifth year that we've had the Interfaith Breakfast. I'm especially grateful to Heather Saylor for all of her hard work. In fact, I think you were spending a fair amount of time today making sure that things were all in order for tomorrow morning. And I will, for those of you who are able to attend the breakfast in the morning, if you would be so kind to join with me, I'm going to say just a few brief words of welcome on behalf of the city, but showing our solidarity on this, these important issues and so forth. I would very much appreciate it if you would join with me there. And, and also we'll be, of course, being hearing from President Rogers and also Superintendent Scrooge. We'll also be extending words of welcome. And Mr. President, members of council, that concludes my report, unless you have other questions that you might wish to ask. I know additional information has been provided for you by Lori Treter, our municipal administrator. She's away, but addressing some of the points that were just raised here during the public comment period. So you have all that background information. And I will, and if there's no other, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Other questions for Mayor Edwards? Very good, thank you.
Very good. I thank you.
We have Joe Fawcett from the Municipal Administrator's Office this evening.
Good evening. I have no report, but I wanted to answer any questions that you might have with regards to the city's response last week. If you have questions, I'm happy to field those at this time.
Mr. President?
I don't have a question, Joe. I just have a well-earned compliment that your report was very detailed, and I very much appreciate the time that you put into it.
You're welcome. That was a team effort from myself, the Police Division, the Fire Division, and Public Works.
It was very comprehensive and riveting, and I'm sure it'll be made into a movie.
Perhaps, perhaps someday, starring a role.
There you go. I get to be the gas main that breaks.
Whatever you want. All right.
Thank you, Joe. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Questions for Heather. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening. Just a few quick items since we last met. You're probably aware, but I made this misstep earlier in a meeting, and I said, "All the buildings are down in city park, just the ones that we wanted to come down." So, just wanted to get that right this time. So that project is progressing. Just a couple of quick things, and I'm not going to give you all the flyers, but two might be more advantageous to you. The first one, I know this is Councilman Roland's favorite, is coming soon, is our annual Adult Egg Scramble. And that is Friday, April 26th. I don't know what the gold prize is this year, so I'm not even going to say an amount that might get...
Does that mean it's not going to be $1,000?
That might be. I sincerely don't think it's $1,000. But lots of cool prizes, but that is coming up. Always a fun time. And because Easter is so late, we just had our snow, so we're, so we're good. Also, coming up very rapidly is the Third Annual Super Dash, the obstacle course. This one is for the kids, the Mud Run and Heroes Festival. And so I will pass those out to you. And other than that, we have registration underway for a lot of youth athletic opportunities. One, we have a brand-new youth lacrosse program at the athletic fields behind the community center that's starting this month in cooperation with the BG Lacrosse Club, BG SU Lacrosse Club. But we've done some clinics in the past, and this will get a little more into a league as the ground swell is gaining for lacrosse. T-ball and softball for the summer registration is underway. It's nice to think about summer, as well as our Start Smart T-Ball, which is for the really little ones, three to five. Summer brochure is in production and should be out very soon. All that information will be online as well. And resident registration, believe it or not, begins April 29th for summer programs. So summer is, is coming. I promise that. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Questions for Kristen.
Mr. President, you say it's the 16th Annual Adult Egg Scramble. Aren't all eggs about the same? So what would be the differentiator between an adult egg and a child egg?
Any other questions for Kristen?
Come out, come out and see.
One of them has $1,000.
Thank you. Our City Attorney, Mr. Marsh, is absent this evening. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Just an update for a project up at the water treatment plant. We've been going through this, this winter and rebuilding our rapid sand filters as part of our treatment process. There's six filters. Five of those have been completed now, and number six should be done by this Friday. So the important point here is that we have all of our filters back online before the summertime or the spring, or we could start to see some harmful algae blooms or algae issues in the river that then get transferred into the reservoir. So the good news is that project's getting close to wrapping up as we had anticipated before the algae season begins. The microfiltration expansion is scheduled for September after the summer is over and the algae bloom has started to subside. We'll add that last two trains of microfiltration treatment that will improve our ability to use the reverse osmosis, reverse osmosis process. Again, we'll go to the summertime, hopefully no construction occurring at the water plants and operate as we normally do. So all I have, unless you have questions.
Questions for Mr. O'Connell.
Brian, just in the city parks, I know you had to cut a circuit or temporarily break it for some of the lights on the south side of the park. Do you have an idea when those will come back on?
I had to talk with John Stewart about that. I don't have a schedule for that, that process, but I know we were trying to get a new feed to the new building for Parks and Rec. And with that, the loop for the, the street lighting out there, the park lighting had to be impacted. But I'd be happy to get an update from John and then get back with you by email tomorrow, later this week.
And are we switching over to LEDs there?
Yeah, actually, the park, the park currently has all LEDs. They were upgraded a while back. So if you see a light that has a very white appearance, that's an LED light. If you see something that have more of the peachy or orange colored look, that's the older high-pressure sodium light. Also, if you look up, look up at the LED, you'll almost see the individual LED pieces in there. You'll get blinded for a second too, if you look too long. They are quite bright if you look directly into that light. But the more clear light that's in there is LED. I think with the new parks building, all of those lights are going to be LED or higher energy efficiency lighting.
Good.
Brian, one question about the RO filtration upgrade. Once you're complete with the installation of the two new trains, can you tell me approximately what percentage of our water leaving the plant will be, will have undergone the RO treatment process?
We typically try to run, I would say, between 20 and 30% of our water as reverse osmosis treatment. The bulk of it still comes from conventional chemical treatment. We have to keep that ratio somewhere below 40% overall because we do have to blend the two waters, and we're trying to get a balance of the hardness, the calcium, the other components of the water that we get from the conventional side. The RO strips all of that out of the, out of the finished water product. And so by blending them, we kind of get the best of both worlds. If you didn't have the conventional plant to blend with RO, you'd have to actually add some minerals and hardness, calcium, things back into the water, else you'd have water that really wouldn't be appropriate for consumption or sitting through our pipes for distribution. So by keeping the balance set up at the right percentage, it really gives us the ideal water quality parameters that we're supposed to meet. By adding the microfiltration trains, it's going to let us run the RO units at a more consistent time throughout the day of, while we're treating water. Right now, we have to kind of shut down one or, one or both RO trains while we're treating the, or back flushing the microfiltration system. So by having four microfiltration trains, we'll be able to keep the RO process on for a longer period of time, but we'll get a more consistent blending of that, that water and more consistent water quality. We don't have any problems right now, so I don't think there's any issue with that, but it's going to improve our ability to keep that treatment process working the same throughout, throughout any given day.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, my question, I really, I just kind of wanted to hear you say, because it's my understanding that our ability to run that percentage of water through that highly sophisticated filtration process kind of differentiates us in the region as it relates to the water quality that's leaving our plant, is available, you know, to blend with water, as you say, which is then delivered to our citizens. It really results in a very high-quality water that is being consumed by our residents on a really high basis. And I just think it's important to emphasize those things whenever possible because of the magnitude of the investment involved in that. It's a significant financial investment to install and maintain those sophisticated filtration processes. But yet again, I think the importance of differentiating us and elevating us in the region as it relates to water quality is significant, and it's something that is recognized by our, by our industrial customers as well as our residential customers.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, we, we have water quality parameters that we have to meet at the plant that I think a lot of other, other systems couldn't probably, could not meet our tight stringent quality requirements. So having that ability to have both systems and kind of use the best of both worlds, and we have the older, old-school chemical treatment that still works very well. The newer school reverse osmosis process, it's more pressure-based and just like I said, using the filter media to take out all the contaminants. Then you put the two together and you get a very high-quality product. And being able to expand that, you know, we've got three MGD of RO treatment now. We can add another three, three million gallons of treatment of that RO process. So as the, as the demand for water may increase throughout the upcoming years, we can easily add, with the current building footprint, another three million gallons of treatment for that RO process.
And maintain the same quality.
And maintain the same quality, that's correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that. Utilities Director, Mr. Kraft.
Oh, he got promoted.
I'm sorry, Public Works Director. One hat's enough, I suppose.
Right. Normally, I don't venture into ODOT's public information, but I want to remind everybody that starting on April 15th, out on the roundabout project, the bridge deck will start having work on the south half. The north half was completed last fall. So with that, starting April 15th for 30 days, you will be able to go eastbound, if you can get to Meyer. On your way back, you will not be able to go westbound, cross the deck. You have to use Dunbridge to Poe to Mercer. Same time, the southbound entrance ramp, or I'm sorry, northbound entrance ramp will be closed. So what people need to do there is use Dunbridge to 6 to 75. So if you're coming from Finley, you can get off northbound. Obviously, you can't go left to the west. You have to use that Dunbridge, Poe, Mercer loop again. So that's 30 days. And I don't even want to get into the 60-day closure yet to confuse it any more further than that. But starting April 15th, this will get us to just after the BG SU graduation. So this will be the setup that's in place for that weekend in the middle of May. Brush collection is coming. It starts the week of April 15th is when the collection period is. People, starting today, could call in to give us their address for the collection. We had 180 calls today. So between now and next Monday, give us a call, give us your address, and then we'll create a route for the guys to go pick up that brush efficiently. There'll be another one in May, then again in September, then in October. But if they can call this week to get us their address, we'll get them on the list. Down at Lot 3, visiting work down there. Public Works is starting a project this week. We're going to tear out some sidewalks all the way down to Washington and put a new retaining wall on Lot 3. There were some trees in there that were dead and dying. We removed those last fall, removed the mound in there. And that's where the retaining wall's going to go, and a new five-foot-wide sidewalk, a little wider than it was, and further away from the street. We always plow... We always plowed snow on our own sidewalk there, so we'll move it away from the street, make it a little wider, a little bit more user-friendly. That's what's going on for us right now, and we'll give you update more on the paving of downtown once those contracts get finalized. That's my report.
Thank you. Questions for Brian.
Yes, Brian. The brush collection, people can call through Monday or just through Friday?
They can call on the 8th.
On the 8th? Great, thanks.
Brian, Columbia Gas has utilized a program over the last four years to help people use less gas. And they help people insulate their homes. And by the numbers they gave me and a little calculation, that we've taken about 17 houses worth of gas usage out of the, out of our local consumption. So, that's a, a good thing. Do you have any knowledge of whether or not Columbia Gas intends to continue with this program?
I don't know anything about that program. I do know they have some plans that are coming our way for improved neighborhood delivery of gas. And we haven't seen anything yet, so I hate to even say exactly where it is because that may change. But I don't know anything a lot. Once it gets into the house, I don't know anything about their, their project. We deal with them mostly in the right of way. I don't, I don't know a whole lot about that project, so I don't really want to say. But what, we do suspect there's another neighborhood improvement coming. And once we get more details on that, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That completes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports? Mr. President, we had our third meeting tonight of the Community Improvement Committee with regard to single-use plastic bags, during which time it became apparent that this is not a simple matter to be worked out. Our next meeting will be on Sept-, or no, September. Our next meeting will be on May 6th at 6 o'clock here in council chambers. Thank you, Mark. Additional council committee reports.
Mr. President, I would like to propose a meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee at the next available 6 o'clock period prior to, hey, where, where we at? I think I got bumped from what we talked about earlier.
No, we talked about April 15th.
Okay, that's still good?
It's still available.
Okay. You good? Oh.
About the 6th?
Well, he just scheduled his meeting on the 6th.
But the 15th is still available?
The 15th of April is, was, I had it marked for planning and zoning.
One, one-third of the committee's not available, so. Let's push it into, let's push it down to, yeah.
There's no availability until June. Oh. The first meeting of June.
First meeting in June, 6:00 P.M.? Okay.
It's three, that's June 3rd.
June 3rd? Okay. So, let me, just to clarify again, I'm proposing this meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee for the purpose of reviewing the East Worcester Street, the Strategy for Redevelopment White Paper prepared by Development Strategy, and to specifically develop a detailed list of recommendations to be presented to City Council for consideration and action. And all I would ask of my fellow committee members is that, please give that white paper a good, solid read before we meet and dive into that prioritization process. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And while we're on the subject, Mr. President, are we having a meeting on May 20th regarding the community, the whole?
Yeah, we're going, we might as well go ahead and put that on the calendar now. On May 20th, I'd like to schedule the, many of the whole meeting prior to our meeting at 6 o'clock in order to discuss the proposed revisions to Chapter 94, subsection 152 related to enforcement of civil infractions.
Mr. President, it's not really a committee report. It seems more like a committee as a whole report. And I just wanted to let the public know that when we concentrate on the federal level, there's plenty of opportunity to see that at points, there's dysfunction at the federal level. You could even argue it at state level. And so, I want to encourage you all that if you look at the local level in Bowling Green, we do get along together. Ample evidence of that is that we all participated as a group. John wasn't able to make it. But we all participated as a group in fundraiser for the Bowling Green Schools Foundation for a trivia contest. So, if you can picture all of us around the table with a number of wives included, engaging in an activity that didn't have to do with legislation or representing the citizens, we, we'd done pretty good. We, we didn't finish in first, but we made a good representation. Equipped ourselves well. But the major point is that we got together, enjoyed each other's company, worked together for a very worthy cause. And I, I'm trying to picture that at the national level, and I, I'm having a harder time figuring that. But you can rest assured that although we may disagree on a few things from time to time, it's a respectful disagreement, and we do work well together, and that should be encouraging.
I'm not saying that sort of thing is rare, but there was two inches of snow on the ground as we left the building, so perhaps something was freezing over.
I'm pretty sure that's where you were going.
I think you would say we were playing and working together at the same time. And it was, it was really nice to be sitting there amongst council members, really enjoying each other to the maximum and, and doing something great for our school foundation, too. So, that's who we are, and I'm proud of it.
And I'm not saying that the adult beverages had any effect.
Thank you. Let's move on to the reading of Legislation K.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3729 for first reading, resolution to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. President. Mr. Hollandbaugh. I would like to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3729 its second reading tonight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3729.
Resolution Number 3729 for second reading, resolution to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program. Ordinance Number 8761 for first reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019 and ending December 31, 2019.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we give, suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8761 its second and third readings.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8761 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8762 for first reading, ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT Road Salt Contracts awarded in 2019 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we give Ordinance 8762 its second and third readings.
Just, I believe, the second reading, what we're looking for.
So, let me restate that. I move we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8762 its second reading.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8762.
Mr. President, it might be beneficial for an explanation as to why we're suspending rules and giving second reading and then also passing emergency clauses before the third reading, so that the people understand what's going on.
By adopting emergency clause, the legislation will go into full effect upon passage by City Council and the mayor's signature, as opposed to 30 days, which is the normal process after legislation is passed. But we're only asking for first and second readings in these particular incidents, so that we, so we still can allow for a second public reading, which would allow for an opportunity for public, for public input on that particular piece of legislation.
I was thinking more in terms of who's going to be in attendance and the number of votes.
That's part of it as well. Next, at our next meeting, we'll be shorthanded, as everyone is avail, or is aware, on the mayor will be on vacation. And Ms. Roland, I believe, will be absent from that meeting as well. So, I'll be acting mayor at that, at that meeting, and Ms. Roland will be absent, leaves us a number of five, which does not allow us to suspend rules and process legislation in expedited manner.
Thank you.
You get it?
I, I, thanks.
Ordinance Number 8763 for first reading, ordinance provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,010,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new city park community building, and including landscaping, paving an entry drive and parking lot, and constructing a patio, together with necessary and incidental ordinances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by Revised Code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency.
Okay, before we go on, I, we have one item that we're amending by substitution and that this item or...
It is not. It is Ordinance Number 878, 8758, that we'll be giving second reading to later on.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8763 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's just the second reading, right?
Yeah, just the second reading. Please amend your motion. Bruce is trying to get things done.
Sorry. I move that we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8763 its second reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8763.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Orderance 8761. Yeah, we need to amend that motion to just give it its second reading, Bruce.
First, and then last.
I move that we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8764 its second reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Kay, would you call the roll?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8764.
Ordinance Number 8764 for second reading, ordinance provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $890,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of acquiring real estate for city purposes and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8764.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I do want to make a brief comment here. Mr. Everly raises a legitimate question, and I think the main reason that we deal with property matters in an expeditious way is because we have entities that are interested in properties because they are trying to either get a property at a low cost or sell it at a high price, and we have to be careful how we operate as actors in this situation. And so it is really the place of the mayor and his administration to handle these issues, and our job is to try to understand what's going on. I think because we have met an executive session to discuss these issues, we are well aware of what the plans are. And then I think the other issue is that as representatives of the city, we try to think in terms of the big picture, in the long term, and if we feel that the property acquisition or sale fits in with our long-term goals that have been discussed publicly, then I think we are prepared to go ahead with it. But at times, things have to be handled expeditiously, and so we have to and do have confidence in the mayor and his staff to handle these things.
Thank you. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8764.
Mr. President, concerning 8764, on the last page of the five pages, it has, at the very top, it says Section 16, which is a declaration of emergency, which we just voted on. And then it has a Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect at the earliest time permitted by law. I would assume that we don't have to actually drop that or make a motion to amend because...
It's a typo. I'll take care of it.
Okay. But I wanted to know. Thank you.
Ordinance Number 8765 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate and authorizing the mayor and municipal administrator to complete the purchase of said properties in substantial accordance with the contract, exhibits attached and authorizing the municipal administrator to request proposals for the sale of certain of said property not necessary for municipal purposes, and authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to complete said acquisitions and sale by the mayor and/or municipal administrator.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8765 its second reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8765. Hey, before you, excuse me, before you read the ordinance, I would like to comment on this. This is the ordinance relating to the purchase of real estate that has been discussed recently. Often in Bowling Green, we talk about the importance of our downtown as it relates to the vibrant nature of our community, and we often talk about the need for the city to do everything within our power to support the mission of our downtown merchants, and then hopefully support the continued vitality of the downtown. I believe that these purchases represent the administration and city council's efforts to do just that, to acquire property that is going to support the mission of the downtown by basically achieving four goals that we have discussed in recent years. By purchasing the Huntington Bank Building, we will be able to situate the Four Corners Group in that building in their current location for a significant period of time. Now, we'll be able to do that, and I want to make clear that our intent, long-term intent for that building is to develop an RFP and include in that request for proposal a provision that the prospective purchaser of the building would be required to maintain the Four Corners Group in their current configuration, which is occupying the entire first floor. I also think it's worth noting that not only is the Four Corners Group functioning, I think, at a very high level in that current space, that space has become, I think, a valuable meeting space for the community and has supported numerous downtown events since they have been in that current location. So I think that that is one benefit to the city in this transaction. Secondarily, we will also be acquiring property that will allow for additional municipal parking spaces on the west side of town, so we'll be balancing municipal parking spaces on both sides of Main Street by acquiring additional parking spaces that will be available for those visiting our downtown area on the west side of Main Street. And also, an equally important piece of property that currently abuts the south side of our police station. By acquiring this property, we'll be allowing maximum flexibility as it relates to the potential for future expansion of police operations contained within that building. And then finally, we will also be acquiring the current Huntington Bank drive-through or sometimes referred to their mini-bank. We have discussed in the context of the Worcester Green Development Program for a long time the need for, or the potential need for, public restrooms to support not only the Worcester Green activities, but also other downtown events. So I see all of these things as very positive developments that, again, will allow the city to support the mission of the downtown and the vitality. As it relates to the financing, I think that the key is that the revenue required for these projects will be included in a bond that will be issued at a later date. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but it'll be a bond that will be issued at a later date that will also include the funds necessary to improve all of the city parking lots. So we'll have one bond issued, and when those bonds are sold, we will receive a very, very competitive interest rate, which will allow this expense to essentially be paid off over the course of 20 years. It is going to be a 20-year bond. Is that correct? So I think that not only are we acquiring this real estate at fair market value, the fact that we're able to leverage the city's excellent credit rating and our bond rating to pay off this expenditure over the course of 20 years, all of those things combined make it, in my view, a project that is very easy to support. So I would welcome any other council comments at this time.
I would like to add that, as it often happens in one's life, opportunity just falls at your feet, and you just know you want to take advantage of it because it's there for you, you need it, and it's going to fulfill something that perhaps would have been more expensive in the future. And that's exactly what happened here. We had a building that was being leased by the four downtown groups, that being Downtown BG, the Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but there's a fourth one I'm forgetting. Economic Development. I'm sorry, Sue. You're in the back. I guess I always go in the front, and I don't see you. But they were there, operating very, very well, and the reviews from the citizens were that's where they need to be. They all need to be in this one building, and it's an older building, and it's a building that's loved by people in Bowling Green. The front of the building is fabulous. It's not fabulous all the way through, but the front of the building is fabulous. So the lease was about to expire for our four entities who were housing their offices in that downtown Huntington building, and all of a sudden, we were made aware that the building was going to be for sale and that we had an opportunity to leverage keeping our four entities in that building, keep them there for at least the next 10 years, get the building, and then someone else would be buying it from us. But the lease is in the transaction of the sale, so our entities stay there. That was perfect. You know, you just couldn't ask for anything better. It was win-win-win on all sides. Simultaneously, the little drive-through came up for sale, the little drive-through, just a little tiny building that can be made into a restroom for people to use who are visiting our green space, which is in the process of being completed this year. And then we also had a bonus of getting parking spots, which are dreadfully needed close to downtown. So here we are with all of these available to us. We have met several times to consider this. It's always done in closed session, executive session, because we don't talk about real estate negotiations publicly until a transaction is going to be enacted. So that might explain it to our visitors who don't understand what the Huntington Building is or the drive-through. It's just, it's a golden opportunity close to downtown, close to the police station, close to where we would someday like to have a new city hall, city building, and we had one opportunity to buy it at a good price, and we think we're doing the right thing by doing it. And I'm sure all of us will stand by it. We have pretty strong convictions about this.
Thank you.
Ordinance Number 8766 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into an agreement with the Manchester Group LLC for Utility Service Line Protection Program. Ordinance Number 8767 for first reading, ordinance accepting a utility easement from the Village of Haskins. Legislation for second reading, ordinance Number 8758 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator and the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to po-road improvements and ditch culvert phase-two improvement project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we amend Ordinance 8758 by substitution.
Second.
Been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Mr. O'Connell, if you could summarize the change for the amendment, I've kind of lost track of that. And sorry to put you on the spot there. No problem. Appreciate it.
I think that either Mr. Fawcett or Sue Clark...
We're adding the, to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority as well, that wording.
That's the amendment part.
That is what we're adding.
No problem. Thank you. Yep. Yes.
Okay.
Kay, please call the roll.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8758 is amended by substitution.
Ordinance Number 8, oh, we gotta, you have to suspend the rules now.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8758 as amended its third reading.
Second.
Been seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, please call the roll.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8758.
Ordinance Number 8758 for third reading as amended, ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator and the Utilities Director to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority and to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to po-road improvements and ditch culvert phase-two improvement project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt Ordinance 8758 as amended.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8758 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8759 for second reading, ordinance certifying unpaid cost of snow removal to the county auditor for placement on the tax duplicate. Legislation for third reading, Resolution Number 3727 for third reading, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2019 through 2022 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C., Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas.
Mr. President.
Mr. Zanfordino.
I move that we adopt Resolution 3727.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
That was a little... Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollandbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.